Five thirty on May 5th, 2020, City Council Regular Meeting, set for today, Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, five thirty, here at the Council Chambers. Let the record reflect, all members of Council are present. And at this time, we'll take a moment of reverence in honor of all our servicemen, service women, first responders, health professionals, everybody that's out there on the front lines, and especially right now during this COVID-19 pandemic, we ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, for Citizens Communication, I'm going to ask Judge Saucedo to join me at the podium, so we can just give an update on the numbers and information over, the latest information on COVID-19 in our area. Judge?
Well, the judge will go first, he's got the information in English, so we'll let him go first.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We're looking at situations here. First, let me start with the numbers. Today, we'll have a smaller scope than we usually have, but as of now, we have tested 640 individuals, 544 which have come back negative, 26 are positive, 70 are still pending, but the good news is now that we have nine that have fully recovered. That's something we had. So we have another individual who's actually recovered, that's good news. The mayor and myself, we're looking at some stuff that we have to digest that we received today on the governor's press conference. I'm pretty sure a lot of our public is aware of it. I know some people have been waiting for some of the other openings that are coming into play, but we haven't looked at everything. We still, as I mentioned, have to digest some of the information that's coming in as to how we as a city are going to operate, as a county are going to operate. I know that we're looking at some graduation ceremony situations. We'll let you know also that we are working with the EOC. We had every member of law enforcement, of all of the agencies, available to us today to see how we're going to work this weekend. But again, it's a lot of information to digest. Tomorrow, we will have, I believe, the chief of police, our county sheriff, constable's offices, we're waiting to have the EPISD officers there also, to give the rest of the information to the public. For now, though, those are the numbers. We continue to work diligently. Thank you, members of the council, for giving me the opportunity to be here with you all today, and I will pass it to the mayor for the Spanish version.
Thank you, Judge. Buenas tardes. Nomás dando la información sobre el COVID-19. Desde las cinco de la tarde hoy, se han dado 640 pruebas del examen. 544 han salido negativos. Seguimos en número 26 personas que han salido positivo. Y tenemos pendiente desde hoy 70 todavía exámenes que se han administrado durante los últimos dos días. Ahora, lo bueno es que sí, dimos la prueba a una persona otra vez más, y esta vez salió negativo, so ya vamos a nueve recuperados de coronavirus. So, buenas noticias hay para esa persona que ya salió desse virus. Hoy por la tarde, a las 2:30 de la tarde, el gobernador Álvarez tuvo una conferencia y también indicó nuevas reglas que va a abrir, y podemos decirlo ahorita por lo que dijo él, pero sabemos la última vez que hizo eso cuando lo vimos en escrito era un poquito diferente, so no les podemos dar mucha información. Ya saben que unos negocios van a abrir empezando este viernes, de los peluquerías y salones de belleza, pero tenemos que todavía ver lo que viene escrito por la oficina del gobernador para estar seguro de los requerimientos que van a tener esos negocios. Y también para asegurarnos que nosotros como la ciudad y el condado, como dijo el juez Saucedo, tenemos que asegurarnos que estamos siguiendo las órdenes así como los está explicando o poniendo en escrito el gobernador, y que todos entiendan eso. Inclusive, habló de ceremonias de graduación, pero, por favor, no se adelanten, tenemos que ver qué específicamente está diciendo el gobernador ahí. So, esa es la información. Mañana vamos a traer a los oficiales de la ciudad, el jefe de policía, el sheriff sheriffs Mervor del Condado, también los contestables, y también miembros de la fuerza del distrito, porque vamos a estar todavía con la fuerza que tenemos para asegurar que la gente esté siguiendo las ordenancias, las declaraciones del condado tanto como de la ciudad. Y van a estar trabajando este fin de semana para asegurar, delimitar, que se junten en grupos grandes, en sus hogares. Sabemos que es un día muy importante para nuestras madres, pero tenemos que estar al tanto de que quizás nosotros estemos más bien de salud y no nos afecte tanto el virus, pero a la persona más mayor que sí tienen más complicaciones médicas, eso sería algo más grave, y por eso queremos todavía pedir a la comunidad que se limiten a estar en sus hogares, y por eso vamos, nos juntamos hoy con los cuatro departamentos para trabajar juntos en evaluar la situación sobre el fin de semana. So, con eso los despedimos, y mañana les damos más información sobre las declaraciones nuevas del gobernador, y cómo vamos a estar trabajando este fin de semana para seguir esas declaraciones. Muchísimas gracias, que vayan los días. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. All right, moving on, was there any other Citizens Communications recognition?
None whatsoever.
Yeah, I will say I had the pleasure of doing a proclamation for the lady Crescencia.
Yes.
Hundred-year-old today, so it was a beautiful morning to see her out there. Moving on to public hearings. Public hearing on proposed request submitted by Dora A. Rodriguez for the rezoning of Lot 13, Block 47 of Hillcrest Edition, 235 Brazos Street, from R3 duplex district to R3A apartment district. Placido?
Mayor, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, and let the public hearing start at 5:37 on May 5th, 2020. Yes, Placido, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. I was trying to get my presentation going before you guys to show a few of the slides, but I'm having some technical difficulty getting it on here. I'm sure Sergio, at the, is Sergio Masqua available?
Is Sergio here? Sergio's here, no?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, he's. Placido's having trouble, but he needs to raise his volume a little bit.
We can barely hear you, Placido.
I sent over the slides.
Placido, we can barely hear you. Can you turn up your volume or get closer to your computer?
How about now? Can you hear me better now?
There you go.
Okay. I sent over slides to see, I'm not sure if Mr. Masqua has them available there on the monitor for you guys. If not, I can just cover it, I can just go through, discuss it verbally.
Yeah, he hasn't put it on. Go ahead, Placido.
Okay. So, this item is a rezon request from R3 duplex to R3A apartment district. It is on 235 Brazos Street, which is between Garrison and Main. It's fairly close behind the area where KFC Chicken Restaurant is.
KFC?
And this particular, this particular request, switching from R3 duplex to R3A apartment, is, we feel, for it to justify, there's a couple of other apartment districts already in, on that street within, within a few houses from this property, so although that whole street and that zoning, that district is duplex, we do feel it's justified for the R3A apartment district, as there's several others that are also apartments in the area. It is an 81 square feet lot. This does meet the minimum square footage for the R3 apartment zoning, which allows for up to four, four, if to the maximum of four units, which this is the plan for this particular owners' development, and they do plan to do a four-unit apartment. They would need to, they would need to comply, obviously, with the various quota ordinances for this development. The item did go through the zoning commission and was approved where this changed from R3 duplex to R3A apartment. There is going to be a requirement to place a six-foot-high side of scaring fence to separate the rezon site from the residential lots. Required drainage must go directed toward, away from all the budding properties during this development. There was all the pertinent detail, the recommendation is to go ahead and grant this request. Does the council have any questions on the item?
Is that an empty lot right now, or something?
It is an empty lot. The owner owns this particular lot and one next to it, where they have a small business for janitorial services. So, they currently, they currently use it mostly for, there's a few vehicles that have been parked there when, I went by the day, we also took pictures before, and they usually have a few of their vehicles from that business on this particular vacant lot.
What's on the other sides and across from it? Is it all, just all apartments, or what is it? Because I noticed that's what it sort of said on some of the paperwork, but I wanted to make sure. And what are the other people around the area?
Across the street is part of the Colegio Biblical.
Yeah.
It's what?
Colegio Biblical. I didn't know where exactly it was, I'm trying to.
It's the Uset Kentucky.
And to one side is the owner's business, which is a janitorial service, and then to the other side is a resident, a regular residential property.
It's on the other side.
Is there any questions from the council or the audience? The other, the other residents were asked, I mean, there was, was there any kind of? Any opposition? No. Sorry. Mr. Madal.
Yes, sir, good question. We did receive a letter of opposition, and I did receive a, a visit as well. I'm glad you reminded me to mention that. I did receive a visit from one of the owners on the street who, who did feel that the area was very dense, that being other, being that there's other multi-unit properties in the area, their, their belief was that because there was quite a few multi-unit properties, there was more vandalism and theft. The gentleman mentioned that he had some items stolen from his property. He said he did not file a police report, so we weren't able to confirm that one with the police department, but he, he mentioned that he felt like some of the, some of the apartment residents had stolen some items from him, and so he was in opposition mainly because he said that more, more apartments, he feel would lead to more of those type of situations or events occurring. He did mention that he was going to be going out of state to work, so he wasn't going to be able to make it for the meeting where we were presenting this to the zoning commission, but he did make that, make those comments known. Although I did check with, with Chief Juahago when we received those comments from the, from the owner, if there had been, you know, known cases or any issues noted in that, in that street or in that area, and he said there had not been anything out of the normal in that area, and that they would just keep a, keep an eye on it, but nothing out of the nor, out of the ordinary.
Now, Placido, how many apartments are they planning to construct this for? And it's going to have the parking lot to accommodate eight, is that eight cars? That's in my other concerns.
Yes, sir.
All right.
That would be the requirement. They want to do four, and they would need two, two spaces for a unit.
Mr. Madal, are there other, because I'm, I'm trying to picture the street, and I'm not sure if it's the one in front of, of the actual street, but isn't there like several empty lots on that street?
I, no, I don't believe there are. We, I checked through to see the number of other apartments, and how many residential, and what else was on the street. So on one end, it's, like I said, you've got the, the first property is KFC on one side, and then the Colegio Biblical on the other side. They have quite a bit of, of property, that, that church, and then there's one apartment right beside KFC, and then a couple residential, and then further down the block, there's another apartment or two, and then once you get down to the other end of the street, there is a, there is a large vacant lot, once you get to Main Street, which is adjacent to the Casino Cafe, and on the opposite side, also some, some apartments over there, but not too many vacant lots on that street.
Right. Except for the big one in the corner.
That one, yes, yeah.
What's your recommendation, again?
The recommendation is to grant the, the approval. This is a vacant lot, which is not being utilized at the ti, at this time. It's, it's been vacant for several years at least, and, you know, this, this looks like a good opportunity to get it developed, get some more apartments, some, some affordable housing for the community. It's not, doesn't, it's not out of the ordinary, as there's other apartments on that street, so we do recommend the approval of the rezon.
There's no action here, though.
No, it's further down.
Yeah, it's, it's item six. All right, any other questions or comments from council? Anybody on chambers? And let the record reflect, the public hearing closed at 5:47 PM on May 5th, 2020. Moving on to item number two, public hearing on the proposed final replat of Lot 1 and Block 1 of Chorgas Foster Subdivision, Unit 2, closing of public hearing and possible action regarding same. Placido?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Time, 5:48 PM on May 5th, 2020. Thank you, guys. We're scaring Placido already. Sorry, I forgot the time.
Okay, okay, no worries. Yeah, I'm going to throw it off too, without getting my, my slides up there for you guys. So, this item being presented by Mountain View Engineering, requesting final plat approval for an approximate 5.6566 acre tract into two commercial lots. It includes a variance to, to flat property less than five acres. This item also went through the Planning and Zoning Commission and did receive approval at the April 9th meeting. This is, there are actually going to be two, representing this one and another one from the same owner and engineer. They're right next to each other off of El Indio and the Truck Route. And one of them is fairly developed already, it's been under construction for some time, and it's a, it's a small commercial plaza or shop, so several office suites. And then the other one, we'll, we'll get to the, on the next item, is just across it where they plan to do something very similar. So this is, the address for this is at 2316 El Indio Highway. It's Lot 1 and Block 2 of Chorgas Foster Subdivision, Unit 2. It encompasses two property IDs where they are, again, seeking to replat into two commercial lots. The zoning for this area is B3 General Business District, and again, their plans are to make commercial development on these two properties. And the recommendation from the planning department is that the council grant the subdivision variance and proceed directly to final plat, replat, requiring that they comply with all quota ordinances in Chapter 23 governing final plats. Again, I wish I could show you a couple of images and areas around this particular development, and what it looks like now, we haven't done a presentation, but I believe many of you probably are familiar, at the intersection of El Indio where the Truck Route meets, right, it is, one of the properties is right beside the Dollar Store, that's off of where Bib and El Indio intersect.
Well, they've already, they've already done some upgrades there, right?
Yes, on one of them. Yes, sir. On this, on this particular one we're discussing, and the next one is just across the Truck Route, just across the street, where the other one will plan to have very similar development, once this one's done.
All right, any questions from council? Anybody in council chambers? If none, then the public hearing closed at 5:51 PM on May 5th, 2020. Moving on to item number three, public hearing on.
This one we do take action.
On what?
This one we do take, they do take action.
Oh.
By number two? Yes, the number two.
Number two. Possible action at that. So, we, do we close the hearing first? And then take action?
Yes. You already did.
So the recommendation is to approve, Placido?
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon. Second. Second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Any further discussion, any questions for Placido or anybody? No? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item number three, public hearing on the proposed final replat of Lot 1 and Block 2 of Chorgas Foster Subdivision, Unit 2, closing of public hearing and possible action regarding same. Public hearing open at 5:52 PM on May 5th, 2020. Placido?
Yes, Mayor, this one's pretty much identical, going through very quickly. It's again, Mountain View Engineering requesting final class through the subdivide, a 4.68 acre tract into two commercial lots. They're, they're going to be doing almost the same thing that's just across the street that we just discussed. As soon as one is complete, they plan to start the other. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this one as well at the April 9th meeting. Again, so B3 General Business District, front area, and the recommendation for this as well from Planning Department is, or Council, to approve the, the item with the conditions that they comply with all quota ordinances specific to final plans.
Any questions for planning? Do we know what kind of business they want to build there?
It's a, it's a suite, I, I know they're, they planned a sublet, it'll be like almost a shopping center with, with multiple commercial units. I don't know, but I'm not sure that they even know. I think they'll be renting those out as, once it's developed and there's business interest, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with what exactly would go in there.
Okay.
That's a good question. Any other questions?
All right, let the record reflect, the public hearing closed at 5:53 PM on May 5th, 2020, and your recommendation is to approve, Placido?
Yes, it is.
Motion made by Mayor, Councilman Vialpando. Second. Second by Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion? Nambien, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item number four, minutes. Approval of the minutes of March 5th, March 31st.
March 25th.
March 25th. Approval of the minutes for March 25th, March 31st at 5:15 PM, and March 31, April 17, April 21, and April 23, 2020. You've been provided the minutes. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? Nambien, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item number five, monthly departmental. Council members, anybody have questions or comments for bridge department?
I guess I, I do have a question, but not necessarily just for bridge, for, I guess all the departments. They're there, right? They're still there?
Yes.
I just, you know, just, I guess, update us. I know that some employees started their furlough time already, and, and I just, you know, any feedback, anything? I mean, I know that most of them understood the reason why we're doing it, but I just want to know the feeling, how, how things are coming out with any other directors? Anybody, any issues?
Cynthia has a report for you, and when we get to HR, if you want to wait.
Okay, Cynthia has the report. Okay, good. Okay.
No issues.
HR?
She's gone?
She's the CC right there, at the bottom. She's in the very bottom, the CC. Cynthia, you there?
Is she out of Fergo?
You have the mute on, take the mute off, there you go.
I'm on it. Yes, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
She's there, okay.
Good. Okay, I don't think you can see me. Not sure why.
No, but we can hear you.
Okay, good. Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, I've gotten a few calls from, from the employees, the only, nothing, nothing negative, they're just really wanting to know, you know, what's the next step. They've, by now, received their packets, giving them the instructions of how to move on from here, of how they're going to file every other week as far as requesting their payment. I think there's a little bit of confusion with the verbiage of the letter. It does state "file," so they, I know some have, they're misunderstanding it, thinking they're going to have to file again. We've already filed that, that's, that's all good, so we're just assuring them that, no, it's just to file to report to the workforce, to the unemployment office, that they're going to be requesting their payment every other week. They're basically confirming that they're still not working. Their first filing date should be May 10th, and that's what would have been on their letter with their instructions. So we're telling them that. The, I've been in contact with the local workforce center, and they've been calling the employees. They, they were a little behind, they have a big workload, but they've been calling them, they said they're still calling them throughout this week, just to kind of guide them, you know, on the process, what's going to happen, what other resources are available to them, and if they needed help, they could do it either through the phone or through the website, and if they need help registering on the website, they're walking them through that as well, they're, they're doing that for them.
Register, what do you mean, registering?
They have to register as part of the unemployment process. They have to register with the unemployment office to file or report every other week just to kind of call in and say, you know, basically, they're just going to be answering a couple of questions, it's an automated system, just basically, you know, that they're not, they're still not working in order to request that next payment. They have to report how many job searches they've done, which, it's been waived, so they enter zero. No job searches are required, but they're giving them the option, if they want to register on the Work in Texas site, it's not required, but they're letting them know that there's that resource available to them, so those that would like to register on that website, they're doing it for them.
But that's different than the, the mass filing that you all are doing for them, right?
That's already been done. That was done that, that last Friday, so that first payment, you know, should be on its way. This is just for every other week that they have to file to request that payment.
Okay, I understand.
It's basically confirming we're still not working, you know, still require, requesting that payment.
And they each have a duty to report to get the payment?
Yes, then, correct. The instructions are on their letter. I believe their first filing date should be May 10th, which is a Sunday, next, this coming Sunday, so it just ends up, it just ended up on that Sunday. So every other Sunday thereafter, they'll just call in or go online after they've registered. It's real simple, it takes a couple of minutes, and just answer those quick questions. If it's nothing major, we've already answered all the big stuff for them. And just answer those quick questions, if it's nothing major, we've already answered all the big stuff for them. It's just confirming that they're, that they're still not working.
Cynthia, I'm just going to ask, because I know and I understand how you said that, you know, it's a simple process. But I think that was our concern, so let's just make sure, I mean, I don't know if you have anybody that's helping you in the department now. And I know it's sixty-three people, I know it's a lot, but I just want to make sure that, yes, like you say, it's simple. But it might be simple for somebody that's used to the office work and all that, you know, familiar with that. So let's make sure, and I know that most people will be able to answer those simple questions. But let's just please follow up and make sure that everyone was able to do it. You know, we don't want to worry lapses or anything because they did not understand how to do that. Or they were not able to do it for whatever reason, so can you please follow up with that, Cynthia?
Correct, correct, and that's one of the reasons I've been also following up with the local office. Because since obviously they, they would know more about the process and can help them a lot better. So I'm making sure that they're calling them now, if they're not, that's why I'm calling them every day, making sure, are you still reaching out? So I know they're still in the process of calling everyone. So, you know, by Friday, we should have everybody pretty set, because that call would be on Sunday. So I'll check in again on that office, you know, daily. And if I'm aware that, you know, someone's not being contacted, we'll reach out and we'll see what we can do. But the call coming from T W C should help them out a lot, since, you know, they, they have better information and. Obviously, better access to, to helping them. But we're still in contact with them, and we're, we're getting called by some employees, of course, so we're guiding them as best as possible.
Thank you.
Cynthia, could you make sure that when you talk to them, you ask if they were. Put on the Texas Workforce Commission list of U I filers who need a callback from the Ombudsmen Office? And this is a process, there's a lot of people in unemployment, and I've gotten calls from people that I know. That have had a hard time getting through that eight hundred number. So this is a, a different way that they, rather than them having to call in every two weeks. They're going to be put on a list to get a callback. And, and that's, that was something that we discussed with the workforce center. To make sure that that was available to our employees, I want to make sure that they were asked to put on that list, or they were put on that list. And I just shared it with all of you.
Okay, sure, no, I'll ask first thing tomorrow.
I, I just sent you that, that message on that to your email, and I shared it with the council.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
I'll follow up on that.
Any other questions for H R while we got her there? Oh, she already muted herself.
She's there.
She's still there. Any other questions for H R? All right, thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, thank you.
Did, did anybody have questions for Bridge? Economic Development? And is Arturo there, where's Arturo?
He's there.
Arturo? Cut your mic off. There you go. All right, just so you know, Arturo's been helping us a lot. In getting information from businesses, helping businesses understand some of the services out there. So could you just go over some of those new things with the new stimulus package, Arturo?
Yeah, so as of last week, there were about nine different businesses that were approved for the emergency loan.
Can you get closer to the computer?
Yeah, let me, let me know if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, yeah, as I mentioned, so as of last week, we spoke to several businesses, and about nine of them. Were approved for the emergency loan. In addition to that, I've been contacting the businesses to see, you know, what other sources or resources we can provide them. Additionally, on our website of Eagle Pass, the city of Eagle Pass, in Eagle, under Business Resources. If you're a business and you need to find out, you know, more of what the guidelines are to open up your business, whether you're a retail shop, whether you're a restaurant. Those resources and those ones are on there, again, just as a reminder, it's Business Resources under the city page. It talks about, you know, what the distance should be between the tables, what kind of guidelines the customer should follow once they enter the store. And things like that, as the mayor mentioned and the judge mentioned earlier. There were some provisions changed this morning, or this afternoon, to some different businesses that are going to be able to open up starting this Friday. We're going to make those available also on our website as soon as they become available. And just pretty much reaching out to the businesses, trying to help them as much as, as we can adjust to that. There are some questions, there have been some questions with the smaller businesses, whether the capacity includes the workers. So we've been trying to answer those, those questions as well. Right now, we just received word that the capacity does not include the workers. But we have been very, we have gotten a lot of positive responses from businesses. Helping out the city to, to maintain the mask requirement before they go into the, into the, into the business, so that has been very positive in itself. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have regarding any of the businesses that, that we've contacted them.
Thank you, Arturo, anybody have questions for Arturo?
No, just a big thank you, Mr. Marquez, for what you're doing, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely, I love what I do, so thank you guys for having me here.
I know there was a second wave of, of money through that PPP loan, so did businesses from Eagle Pass, as far as you know, apply? Because I know it had, the first time they, it ran out pretty quick.
Yes, yes, actually, we actually saw the wave of, of questions come in. We issued it through our social media sites, and we had a few more people interested and applying for it. I've been trying to, not contact them, but just respond to them as quickly as we get the questions. As soon as we get the questions, I'm hard to reply, let it reply and all that, we've been sending them to the right location. We do want to remind businesses that there are, that the PPP program is not the only program, there are more out there. So that's the one that most businesses know about, but if they have any questions, of course, if they do, reach out to us. Seven seven three one 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 one, and ask for myself, like for the Marquez. And we'll be happy to, to answer any of those questions. Whether it's about the loans itself, whether about, whether it's about reopening or any general business questions, we're still happy to answer all those.
Thanks. Any other questions for Economic Development?
Did, did you say that there was like a list of all those resources that you're, you're listing that are available on the site with your?
Yes, yeah, so of course, the, the second wave of the emergency loans became available last week. So in a, in a two-week period, of course, that means that the sponsors are. Quickly dispersed, so the faster that they can apply for them, the better. The, the site where you can look up this information is, if you go to our website, the city website, and you look up under Business. There's a tab that's called Business Resources. We list every resources that, that we've, we've identified as useful to the business, whether it's the PPP program, the emergency act. Just different grants that are now available through private businesses, or additional resources, again, the guidelines. Or anything that might be helpful to the business to navigate through this, it's, it's all available on a single page, yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to suggest, see if we, they can use headsets or something next time, because, I mean. While we could understand, Arturo was a little, that, that was a little off the, the voice of. If we can get that for all the directors, if they're going to be from home, to use a headphones or, or headset. Any questions for Finance Grants?
He's just down the hall, he's in his office, but yeah.
I wanted to make a comment.
All right.
I wanted to just say, congratulations to our grant department. I had challenged the grant department to go out and look for grants outside of our. Just state federal grant opportunities. And they went out, went out and found some money with the Major League Baseball. They actually were able to get forty-nine, forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars for a Pee Wee Field, I know I told you, Mayor, about it. And so.
For a what?
Pee Wee.
The Pee Wee.
For the baseball, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Their lights are thirty years old, and so they were, they were come back and. And granted the forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, I want to thank Lita, Tom, Lita, and also Ronnie Ribetta, obviously, finding the department for what they did. Because it is a tedious process, as you can imagine, going through that. I want to thank also Parks Director George Sanchez, I don't know, yeah, with a whole team member. And getting the information that they needed to Major League Baseball, because they wanted pictures, they wanted, you know. It was just a, it was a challenging situation, but we built a case for them, grants built a case for them, they put it up to the position where they. It was a favorable decision to be able to grant this forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Right now, as we all know, grants is challenging, because they're, they're requiring a lot of magic grants. One way or the other, either all of it, or half of it, or a quarter of it, whatever it may be. This is just upfront free money, for all magical purposes, we don't have to do any kind of magic grants, so. We're glad that Major League Baseball was able to come back to us, and it's kind of, kind of cool that we had Felipe tres, Barrera come in last. Year, not a part of last year, and he, you know, because he was a part of World Series Championship, the Washington Senators. So we kind of also elaborated that component, and so.
National.
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 And so it used to be the Senators, back in my day. But nonetheless, it was really kind of cool that they were able to do that, so congratulations to your team. Jesse, congratulations to Parks, I mean, because they were really good. Boyada as well, so kudos to them, I told them, hey, now go out to NFL. M B A, maybe not the N H L, you know, but.
Not quite N H L.
Well, definitely.
Why not, they want to build a skating rink.
Hockey?
So M L S and what have you, so we can definitely do that, but those, like I said, there's resources out there, there's a lot of, of. Foundations, that we, that we need to go after. And so we're a community definitely to benefit from something like that, so thank you, I wanted to mention that, thank you.
Good, and thank you to everyone that worked on this, thank you.
Fire Department, anybody have questions for Fire Department? Government Relations Lobby Consultant, do we have Mark on the line?
I'm here, Mayor.
Hey, Mark. Well, they can't see your face, but, hey, just, we're waiting on the, on the literature from the governor's latest declaration, so. We need to make sure we work on that, we also forwarded a letter to Senator Cornyn, Senator Cruz, and Congressman Heard. In relation to those visas expiring for many Mexican nationals, and they can't renew them because, or haven't been able to renew them. Because the consulates are closed, so we asked about possibly supporting an extension on those expiration dates. So we need to make sure we, that they're working on that up there at the, at the national level.
I'll forward. Will do.
Oh, George will, will forward you that, that letter we sent also.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, any questions for Mark? Nope. Human Resources, we already went to Cynthia, anybody have another question for Cynthia? Nope. International.
You know what, well, it wasn't necessarily for, well, Cynthia answered what it might, what I was wondering. But also, the directors, you know, how are they doing as far, and I don't know if, if any of those have been referred to Cynthia, maybe to you or, or Ivan. But the directors, how are they doing with the shortage of people, with less, less people in their departments? Have we checked on that, Mr. Arturo?
Well, obviously, it's an adjustment, but we're adjusting with the administration as well, I mean, we're answering all the questions. Pero gracias a Dios, they're, they're doing good, and they just have to adjust, you know, it is what it is.
Have you followed up with all of them, and they?
Yeah, we did.
He can't do much about it.
Okay, good, okay.
And, because we do, we do have our director meeting every morning on Monday mornings, so. Yes, it is an adjustment, for sure, but they, they're working through it, they know the challenges, they know why this is happening. So it's not, it's not like they don't know, they do know, and they've been adjusting for sure, but. We're, we're, we're going through the first week and a half of this, or the first week, actually. But, but no, they're, we're adjusting, and before you know it, you know, they've built it.
Good. Thank you.
Questions for International Center for Trade? Library? Municipal Court? How are we doing with, did we start the municipal court, did we start the teleconference, or?
You can get Judge Martinez on.
He's there.
Mayor, members of council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We've started the process of trying to get a virtual court going. As a matter of fact, this Monday, we were, we had a training that would advise us as to the ins and outs of the virtual court. It's going to be a challenge, but I think we can get it going. We're also on a list to see when they can come in and help us out and set it up. Right now, since the pandemic started, a lot of municipalities. Have asked Tyler Technologies, which is the one that we're using, to go ahead and set them up, so. We've already sent them an email, and, or we sent them an email, letting them know that we would like to get this started as soon as possible. So that's where we're at.
So no timeframe?
They said that they would try to get to us between a week or two, but just to remind yourselves and the community. That just because the building is closed doesn't mean that we ourselves are closed. We have, and I'd like to thank the I T people as well, but they have been pushing the fact that people can leave. Payments outside in the box, they can do it online, and since the girls are there working, they can do it by phone. So in order for all of us to be safe, if they would like to use those options, then please go ahead and do so. There's a, there's a pay box outside, like I stated, we take them online, and we take them by phone as well. And the girls are there, are ready and willing to answer any questions that the community has. And since last week that the girls have started working, we had a, a positive response from the people. Phones have been ringing constantly, and not only that, but our staff has been reaching out to the individual people and reminding them of their citations. That way, they can take care of them as quickly as possible.
How's the backlog, Judge?
Honestly, I can't attest to all the backlog, but I know that the week before we started. Or before all this pandemic started, I know that I had a Friday docket with about a hundred people, and a Monday docket with about sixty people. So that's just two days, now, that's not including our contested cases where people plead not guilty, but. That we're already starting to break that down, because I believe we're about, we're going to be a month or two behind. But our city prosecutor in their office has been doing great, reaching out to those people that had trial, to see if they can possibly. Send me recommendations for my approval, that way they can, we can move on those dockets as well.
All right. Thank, and are you, both you and Judge Melendez working on this right now, or is it just going to be you?
Well, everybody has to learn the system. Judge Melendez will be, also be able to use this, Judge Melendez, let me thank her as well, because. She's been on the front lines as well, not only with helping us out, but she's also on the front lines doing the monastries.
All right.
So we, we still have to see the, the people that get arrested, and we still have to go there and, and monastate those people, so. She's still out there working there, but everybody has to know the system, everybody has to be well-equipped, because. I'm afraid to say, but I think it's going to be the new norm, which is we're doing now, the teleconference.
Thank you, Judge, anybody else have questions for Judge Martinez? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Parks and, Parks and Recreation?
We're still closed, right, as far as all the parks?
The parks remain closed, no activities. Jesse, there was reimbursements that were sent out for the baseball softball league, so they should be receiving those, if not today, sometime this week. All right, what is it, two-day turnaround, one-day turnaround? Three-day turnaround, all right, so maybe tomorrow.
And the pool and, the, the aquatic center, is it under any kind of maintenance or anything like that, or, I mean, it's taking advantage of the fact that it's not being utilized?
George. It would be easy to. I saw some work being done out there at the pool today, what was that about? George?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Loudly.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Yes, we were out there checking out the installations out there, in a week or two, we're going to. Uh, in a week or two, we're gonna be doing a little bit of maintenance out there that is needed, and then, uh, some things that were pending, uh, from a couple of months ago, but we'll be working out there.
All right, so, I mean, anything that's gonna be done to the pool at this time in preparation for another year? Because I don't think we're gonna open it up at all. Fix it. We're not gonna fill it up with water this year, are we?
No, sir. Uh, what we had planned is, uh, to drain it, clean it, and then go ahead and paint it and put back water again so we can maintain it, because it had to have at least fourteen inches or above the water so the plaster won't crack.
Right, okay.
So, those are plans, but, uh, uh, I was gonna mention that to administration. If they want us to move forward with that, or, or wait to a couple of months, but as far as the, the rest of the installation, we're gonna give maintenance to it.
But that fourteen, you're only gonna put fourteen inches of water? That's just for the ground?
Yes, it's required to have fourteen inches or higher.
Okay.
For the plaster. If y'all see it right now, right now, it has around eighteen inches.
Okay, okay. Now I know why there's water in it, though.
Well, Mr. Sanchez, we do need to make sure.
You gotta maintain it year-round. You can't.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. You, you don't wanna, just because we're not gonna use it, we don't wanna leave it not maintained because then that can be a lot more expensive the following year. So, we need to make sure that, that, I guess, that you, you do what you're doing.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, and move forward, uh, you know, within the next couple of weeks to start preparing it as, uh, we're gonna be opening, and we'll go ahead and drain it, clean it, paint it, and then put back the fourteen inches of water for the main pool and the other ones, too.
Hey, George, were, were we gonna put some striping for the lanes, or we'll just keep using those ropes?
Uh, no, we're gonna go ahead and look into it, see if we can get some paint. We would need some black paints so we can paint those lanes where we had those ropes. So, we can have three to four lanes where we're looking at that.
Okay. And it's gonna be the, the shorter way, or are we gonna do it the long way?
The short way.
Right, the way?
The way we had the ropes.
Yep, okay. We gotta have it ready for next year, George.
Next year.
All right, any other questions for Parks and Recs?
So, see, right, right now's the time to get everything ready, nice, get the fields nice and green for next year.
Hey, George, I, I know we're not in charge of the golf course, or we're not operating the golf course anymore, but let Balda and the guys know that they left it amazingly. It looks awesome. You go look at it, the greens are.
Green?
Oh, man, they're, they're amazingly green.
The greens are green.
Oh, I mean, so, they did a hell of a job, but they left it really nice for this new company. Let's hope they keep it like that. I think they will.
Yes, sir, and I'll let them know. And allegedly, you know, we have pictures, the way they left them and all that, so we have all that in files. I'll let them know, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for planning and building? They'll be giving us some information later on, anyway. Uh, police, code enforcement?
Is, is code enforcement enforcing right now? Are they working, or are they at home?
Chief? Yeah, they're working. I saw them out there today. We're actually using one at the ELC, but the other three are out there. Chief Pohardo, you on there? Is he on there?
Is he there?
Right, he was on there.
He was on there earlier.
Is your mic off, Chief?
Yeah, I'll see you.
I'll see you.
Well, I guess for next time.
But I know, I did see him out there.
He's there.
Is he there?
He's there, but I think he's having trouble unmuting. Wait a while, he figures it out. I just, you know, I know that a lot of us have been walking, and we've been biking around town because we just have to get out of the house, and I think there's a lot to do in code enforcement.
Well, I think Public Works, uh, Gacho, if you can come on, Gacho. I know you, you've been addressing a lot of the brush and the people are piling up. Can you let us know what's going on there? Gacho?
Yeah. Uh, can you hear me, Mayor and Council?
Yes, yes.
Hey, what we're doing right now, we're doing like a short campaign, but we're not advertising. They're even calling us, and we're just getting the address and picking it up. Everybody did song number one that is, that goes from, uh, from Pier Street all the way downtown, all the way to, uh, all the way to Ricks. And right now, we're doing song, uh, two, that, that goes from, uh, Piers to, uh, Bib, from El Indio Highway all the way to, uh, to Veterans Boulevard. And we're, uh, they'll be done this week. Next week, we're gonna go in song two and start picking it up. If we get calls in song one and song two, we'll go back and pick them up.
And I believe the campaign starts next month, though, right?
It will be start next month, the first, first week of the month. We'll, we'll start passing flyers at eighteen of, uh, this month.
Um, Gacho, thank you, but, you know, I, I, I know that there's a lot of people that are cleaning right now, so they're, they're stacking up a lot of their stuff, you know, in front of the yard, and, and that's, you know, that's understandable. But, um, I guess maybe us as Mayor and Council, we need to take a right so we can all be in the same page as far as, as far as that's concerned. Because just walking through two neighborhoods that I've, you know, walked to different parts, I mean, there's stuff that is unbelievable.
One, one, one of the items has to do with the top of dated buildings and houses?
Yes.
So that we can have that discussion.
You know, I, I agree with that. There are, like, we, we wanna limit the ISRs, and there's a lot of.
And, and that's why I asked for that item to be put on there.
You know, and, 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 I mean, I don't think it's fair for people that do keep up, you know, with their properties. It's just not fair, you know? It's just, I don't, anywhere, any which way we look at it, I don't think it's fair. And I think that if we have five code enforcers, then there's no excuse for that.
And I think when we get to that item down the road on this agenda.
I mean, I would hate to, you know, even mention, but I would hate for that to be one of those things where, you know, do we need to outsource that? Or are we gonna do the job that we need to do for our city? Because, I mean, and I'm not exaggerating. Anybody that wants to take a ride with me, I'll show you some places that I've seen that I'm like, oh, my God. You know, I, I think the times where it doesn't affect me, I don't care what happens there, they're gone. You know, what happens at our neighbors, and our neighbor, and our neighbor, I think that affects everyone else. You know, the way, the things that we're living and the things that we're doing, it affects everyone, so, I mean, it's just not fair for people that do keep up with their properties. You know, it's just not right.
I think we all agree on that.
Yes, uh-huh, and I think that if we have enough people to cover that department, then there's no excuse for that. Absolutely none. Um, I had, yesterday, we were at school, and a teacher told me that, and I don't know if this is true or not, um, Chief, if you're there listening, honestly, I don't know. I would like to think that there's no reason for that person to lie, but she did tell me that she had called, uh, there was a dog in front of her, um, house on the street, a dead dog, and that she called and that they, somebody, and I, it's embarrassing for me to say this, but this is what she said, that she was told, that the dog catcher told her, or that whoever answers the phones, I don't know who answers the phone, that they told her to go ahead and catch the dog, and once she had it, to call back.
It was dead? It was dead?
Was it a dead?
No, 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 no. This, the, the dog's another one. This is.
Oh, okay, no.
That she said that, that she called to report the neighbor's dog, that because it continues to do the, the business in front of her yard, and that the guy tells her, uh, whoever answered the phone, she didn't say it was a male, so I don't know. Then he said, okay, then go ahead and catch it, and when you, you do have it, call us back. And I was like, I would like to think that you're lying to me. And she's like, Miss Ramon, I kid you not. I told my husband, my husband said he was gonna call, I don't know who, and I, and I said, well, I hope he did, you know? I hope he did call someone. And then, no, the dead dog is another one. I'm not even gonna go there, but, yes.
Did she catch?
So, eh?
Did she catch?
I don't know, but, you know, I just think that's, it's not a good thing. I just, I.
There's a chief.
Hey, Chief.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. We were almost done.
Uh, okay, I'm back to earth, okay? So, and I did, I, I did catch some of the concerns, but I, I do wanna, uh, hear from this Councilwoman, uh, Yolanda. Uh, what is, some of the concerns are, I, I caught some of the question, ma'am, or some of the, uh, concerns. Can you, uh, please elaborate on that, please?
Um, no, I was just saying that now, and this, during this time, that I think all of us have had a chance to, or have had to go out and walk, you know, and.
You're freezing up a little bit.
Can you hear me there, Chief? No.
Yeah, okay, you know, I'm, I can hear you already.
I was just, um, telling Council how it's, um, you know, a lot of the houses out there, you know, it's, it's pretty embarrassing. You know, all the stuff that they have in the front of the houses and, and stuff like that, and I, I just feel that we have five code enforcers, if I'm correct. I don't know, I think we do have five, right? Or how many do we have? Five?
Yeah.
Yes?
We have five.
You know, and it's just, you know, I, I think there's no excuse. You know, our city needs should be very clean. I mean, I don't know what's going on. I don't know if they actually walk the streets, or they just drive by, and, or if anything is reported, they do it, or I, I don't know how that works. I would like to know a little bit more about how, how the department works.
Yes, of course, yes. I, I know we provided in, in the matter report, uh, Councilwoman Ramon, and I, I know that they have been out for, uh, a few weeks because of the emergency leak.
So, they've been out, okay. That was, that was my question originally.
Yesterday, we went out, Thursday and Friday. Yes, ma'am. And, and Park, Augustine, of some of the area, in fact, I, I spoke with the, uh, with them Thursday and Friday. We concentrate some areas, mostly downtown, uh, North Veterans, and we're taking it district, district, uh, Councilwoman Ramon.
Uh, there are some areas that are a little impacted.
We did have them out. I know, and now we have a, like, a short, mid, brush, uh, that, uh, public, so people are, we, a lot of people are at home. Right now, a lot of people are doing some cleanups, and they're putting things out in the, out in the, in the public areas.
It's hard for me to understand. I don't even.
As we speak, uh, we did clean out some of our most, uh, ISRs in, in our downtown area and other places, and we're gonna be addressing. But yes, uh, I'm glad staff is back. I have, well, I'm assigned to, you know, Emergency Operations Center, but I'm, uh, working with the other four, uh, code enforcement officers in that we're just taking a, a little, making better assessments and doing a little more strategy, and, and going about it and, and making sure that we clean up our city. Uh, we're setting up cameras in, uh, some parts of the city, uh, so we can catch some of our illegal dumpers. We had some issues, uh, last week with that. We, we put some, we, based on public service announcements out there, so we let the committee know that it's, it can be a criminal offense if you, if you illegally dump trash in a public area. So, we're working with, uh, Councilwoman.
And I, I agree with the Councilwoman. We, we have to make sure that code enforcement is, is out there enforcing these, our city ordinances because I have seen and I've received complaints just here on Main Street. There's a, a mechanic shop with like thirty cars. They're all over the place, and that's the, the main street that everybody drives through, and we wanna make sure that the city looks nice and has good presence. So, we, we do expect a lot of these from the, the code enforcers. And there, there has to be consequences of, unfortunately, for people that don't follow.
I agree. Um, Chief, I guess we'll have.
And we're, we're strictly through the ordinance. Uh, I'm, uh, working with other major projects on Pier Street, um, and, and the north side of town, uh, used car lots that are, and that are parking vehicles without the, I get, having the, uh, the proper, uh, documentation, or so to speak, when, with a certificate, certificate of compliance, and occupant, we're working with as well.
Yes, sir, but that's.
Please, I'm saying, if you change this, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. And I, I know that we did, we did pick up some major ISRs. We're working, start close to planning, and we work some, chief major, uh, projects, I wanna call them, that, you know, I know for the longest time, they, they kinda sat, but we're, we're working digitally right now, enforcement, and making sure that we, we, they're just getting rid of some of the ISRs in our community.
I don't think there's good communication, but, um.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, we, we can't hear you very well because of, of this.
Because of the COVID.
Technical difficulties, but in the next minute, if we could have a report.
The directors need to be here. But that needs to be addressed. I mean, you know, it needs to be taken care of, whoever, but we need to take care of it.
And we need more people in that department, ma'am?
No. I think we have enough that just.
The other day, first and foremost, everybody in that department, in my opinion, is a code enforcer, is that? Everybody from, you know, the chief on down.
I agree.
To the lower level. And so, we need to make sure that we're, we're, you know, letting them know about that, too.
Plus amongst us, right? So, we're working on a, setting up a three-on-one system, so, okay, whenever, however, on a non-emergency line. We're working on that. I know IT is working on that. We did have a, a, somebody email us some very, very, very disturbing pictures of some people dumping the other day.
Yes.
And I, I do wanna thank, if he's listening, thank you to Mr. Villasenor for saying that to us, and, and, and to, uh, Mr. Mora as well. And so, we got on top of that, uh, Mayor and Council, and they sent it to us like at eight-thirty by the time, uh, by eight noon, you know, uh, code enforcement and, and, and Public Works that already addressed the issue, but it was some items that we took care of down on that Royal Ridge area. I do get concerned in the sense that I, I feel like there's just many individuals in our community, for lack of better words, they, they, they almost don't care. Why are you doing this? I could say a more, more colorful word, but, but unfortunately, I'm like, do, would you do that in your backyard? Would you do that in anybody else's property or your own property? Why do you do it in, in, in property that doesn't belong to you? So, okay, it's, it's an attitude adjustment, right? It's an attitude adjustment. We need to call out other individuals, I mean, if we see it, doing, doing it. So, we are, we're definitely working on that, and, and I know that, uh, we'll, we'll get more on this as far as trying to get code enforcement more involved in this. But I know that Chief Zanari, PSA, I mean, shortly after that incident that was reported by Mr. Villasenor via email, because, oh, yes, you can't do that. I mean, it's just really, really disturbing as to how you see that, so.
Looks bad.
We need to, first and foremost, change attitudes, change mindsets, bring awareness to the community that it's not okay to do that. Okay, so, Ms. Ramon, very well, uh, your point has been very well-taken, Mr. Salinas, and I know that all the, the rest of you also bear the same, uh, the same concern.
Well, the chief was there. He walked in, if you wanna ask. I guess you were in your office?
Uh, yes.
Oh.
The, the connection was very good.
I was waiting your whole internet for the issues. It's our internet.
I thought, that's what I thought. I thought maybe he doesn't have good connection.
No, and I can hear some of them, and I can hear everything, but, uh, good evening, Mayor, and members of Council. Yes. I got some, some of the information, and I know that, uh, and all of us over, and, and I've seen it, and we all have seen it. The, some of our, what I, what I talked to Mr. Antuna is about some of our most iconic ISRs in our community, right? And yes, and what, what I see is that, and, and I agree, and certainly not here to say, well, you know, what do we need to do? But I, I, I wanna test you right now, and I, I wanna assure you that we're, we're taking the, all the proper steps what is allowed by our city ordinance, our laws, to make sure that we clean up our community. Uh, we're making some drastic measures, and pretty much, uh, last week, uh, I sat out with my code enforcement staff, and I said, let's just drive around and let's see what, you know, of course, we need to address a hundred and one things, but let's start with at least ten things today. And then next week, we'll work on this, and we're gonna be moving forward. Uh, I, I know it, there's certain areas in town that I think for the longest time, we just, they've been acceptable, essentially acceptable. I think we all have fallen into that where, you know, it's just something that was just accepted the way it was. But we're, we're taking a whole different measure, uh, Councilman, uh, Salinas, under you, uh, the comments that you make right now. And yes, we're very cognizant of our responsibilities and what we need to do. We're, we're strategizing our code enforcement division, and we're, we're gonna see changes in our community. Uh, and most important, I think, when we. and we're, we're gonna see changes in our community, uh, and most important, I think, and what Mr. Anduna stated as well, is educating our community about, because we become complacent, and we accept it, it becomes socially acceptable, that we have neighbors that throw trash in tires, or they have empty lasses, where we don't cut the weeds, and we use them for our, you know, uh, our abandoned, uh, uh, vehicles, inoperative vehicles, and then we looked at it, and we accept that as a, as a social norm, where, where it's okay, and then it, it becomes like a virus, it just kinda spreads as well, and it, it's hard to bring back, but I assure you that we're taking proper steps, I'm, uh, along with the mayor as well, I'm informed about some major projects that I have going, and so I have to, Mr. Anduna, and we're gonna be working a lot closer, uh, with Mr. Placido Madera, and, and planning, and myself, and, and some of these businesses, and over the years, and I'm not saying it was because of that process or because of this process, but all the years, we got accustomed to, uh, letting it go, and, and, and we, we all sort of embraced it because of who the people they were, or who they knew, or whatnot. Well, we're taking a very different approach, and basically, we're just following the city ordinances, and I did ask my code enforcement staff, if any questions arise from the community over what process that we're working with, just notify me directly. Okay, so, with that said, I, I think we're moving forward with some, some, uh, very big projects, and, and I assure you that we're, we're, we're gonna be seeing, uh, results here soon. Okay, so, please bear with us, thank you for the concerns, because they're my concerns too, ma'am, and I appreciate it, you know, let, but it's not something that I think we need to be, kinda tied in each other, I, I think, we just need to embrace it and say, okay, what have we done in the past, well, I don't know, but this is what I'm gonna be doing today, and move forward with it, so. Thank you.
Any questions for, any more questions for Chief?
Well, no, no questions, just those concerns, you know, I just think, um, they need to be addressed, and I'm not just talking about five or ten businesses, like you say, I'm talking about private properties, you know, all over, all over. You know, so it's, um, I think it'll be a good idea, once we can, you know, for us to just take a ride through Eagle Pass, so that I think all of us can.
I actually did that with the chief today, because being that this item was on the agenda. No, no, but you should, you should, I mean, you should get on a ride with either the chief or code enforcement, so they can point out what they're seeing, and then, and that's why I brought this item, which item is it? Can't remember what item it is. Item eleven, to discuss these things, and right before this meeting, we were with the planning department and legal, just, I wanna make sure all of us are aware of the process, and what's gonna happen, you know, from now on.
Substandard or an occupied building.
No, I understand, and I also just wanna say that I do appreciate what you all are doing, because, I mean, still reading your report, I do see that code enforcement, they, they addressed quite a few lots, some of the right-of-way concerns and other things, I mean, it's not like they're not getting things done, and I understand, uh, the residents, I mean, they have to have their, what's the word, not their, not due, like, due process, I guess, they give them an opportunity to comply, so, I mean, sometimes it might look like from us that we're running around, and we say, well, look at all those weeds growing out, they might have already been notified, but they have, you know, their opportunity to try to comply, so that, I mean, it's, it's tough to always be on top of them, but I mean, you know what, we do thank you for what you do, and we know it's not like, it's not being addressed, but we will.
And it's a big, it's a big baby, and that's what I'm saying, you know, it's, how does it run, how does it, you know, because it, it is a lot, and it needs to be addressed, I know there's gotta be, like, maybe one enforcer to so many cities, and I also wanna make sure that we have the people that we need to have, in order for us to do what needs to be done, you know? I don't wanna, like, in this case, I don't wanna just be asking and asking, that's, we need to do this, and this, and that, and it's, it turns out that we don't have enough personnel, and that's why I asked, you know, are they here, do we have enough, you know, how does it, maybe it's my fault, maybe I should know a little bit more of how it, it's, it runs, or it's supposed to be run, but it is just a little, um, I guess disappointing, you know, to, to be walking down the neighborhoods and see a lot of things that we shouldn't be seeing, you know? And in my mind, I'm thinking, you know what, some of these places, honestly, I mean, you know, there's kids in those places, they shouldn't be, you know? Because some of those places are, are really dirty, that's, it becomes a, a hazard, it becomes a, a safety issue for some of these kids, you know? And, I mean, I know it's their responsibility to the parents, but it's our responsibility to make sure that they're doing what they need to be doing, you know? If, if they're not doing it, then somebody needs to enforce it, that's what I'm saying.
I just think there's a, there actually, I think there's just a really great opportunity for us to sort of do things like, between departments, and it sort of goes back, I allude back to what Mr. Anduna said about how, um, sometimes we just need to re-educate our public, and it's, we need to sort of change the mindset, a lot of people don't have the idea of what it is maybe to be environmentally conscious, and it doesn't mean that you have to recycle everything, but you know what, you can also take care of your environment, and that would be your environment, will be mowing your lawn, or watering your lawn, or whatever the case may be, but there's a lot of things that we can do, like, I mean, it's like how Mr. Sandoval mentioned about the cleanup campaign, I mean, let's target those areas and do it uniformed to where, um, code enforcement is out there as well, and you know that they're gonna be targeting, you know what, let, let this area know, we're gonna be cleaning up, there's also these things that you need to be complying with, if you're not, you're gonna be, I mean, you know what, let's, boom, you take it all in one, that one zone, like you, you classified them as zones, you know what, I think Public Works needs to get together with code enforcement, so y'all can do that, we have our marketing department, make the people aware. I mean, there's an opportunity, we're there to try to help you, clean up your lawn, leave the stuff up, they're coming by to pick it up, you know, we're, we're providing the services, I think, we just need to let the people know the opportunities that we're doing, and I think that'll help alleviate a lot of the problem where it actually becomes more of enforcement, but it's just day-to-day compliance, and that's really what we actually need.
And I agree, Councilman Davis, and, and certainly what, what the city manager said as well, that we need to maybe take another approach, and, and maybe start. Because, you know, over the years, in the general discount, and we have a tendency to become complacent, because it, it was accepted. You know, the, the chicken coop in the back of the house, and the dogs tied in the front of the house, and the weeded lots in the back, and, and it was just acceptable. But now, we're, you know, we're seeing it like from the outside in, that you, you, you take a different mindset now, like, if the charge of code enforcement, I go out there, I go, wait a minute, that looks, that doesn't look right, it's, and it's messy, and it's, 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 uh, it, it doesn't look, people come from our outside, uh, uh, the community, and, and they drive through Eagle Pass, and, and, but we're becoming very cognizant of that, I think, uh, informing all those ideas you just mentioned, and, and just taking a whole different approach to it, I, I think we can accomplish quite a bit.
Chief, you, you talked about making sure businesses have the certificate of compliance?
Of occupancy.
Of occupancy, that, that, that's awesome, I, I think we should keep following up on that, because I've seen a lot of little businesses kinda, just working out of their homes, and stuff like that, so, gotta make sure they have the, the proper permits, and we appreciate that.
And understanding how the process works, I think, that way we don't backtrack and say, you know what, I was given this certification, but now you, you're, someone is telling me that I'm not in compliance, because I don't have, you know, gravel, or I don't have running water, or something like that. But i- i- if we kind of tie our teams together, we can find out that, that we can probably clean up a lot of these, uh, necessities pretty quick.
Yeah.
So, you know, and with that said, I, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction.
You know, I'm happy that you're doing that, and I'm gonna say something, because, I mean, I know this also goes into another department with the fire department, but it's just like, I'll, I'll share with you my personal, like, at our place of business, that I'm happy when they come and do the fire inspections, I mean, I know most people would probably say, oh, there comes the city, or whatever, but you know what, I always tell them, I said, I sort of greet them with open arms, you know, and they, they always, I think they're, they're a little bit amazive with it, but I tell them, I said, because you know what, and, and it goes back to what you said, how you become, not complacent, I'm not saying that I haven't complacent in my place of business, but sometimes things you've done a certain way, and you forget, or you might overlook something, and it's like, they come in with objective eyes, and that's what you're doing also with this department, and that's why I'm trying to share, is that.
Yes.
Someone looks at it from a different setup, with a different eyes, it come in, you know, looking, you know, from the outside in, and that's sort of the way, like, the fired, uh, the fire department does when they come and do the, say, the fire inspections at the places of business, I mean, it's national, because it's like, you know what, there might be something that I was doing that I thought was right, or safe, and, you know, their expertise is obviously gonna be more than mine in that, in that aspect. So it's like, you know what, it's, it's great, you know, so there's a, there's a, there's always a positive way to look at things.
Of course.
You know, so, anyway, that's just my point.
If we do look at the monthly report, you will see that, you know, our, our, our staff, that stays busy, along with animal control officers.
I did see that.
We even instruct our sergeants on patrol to, you know, look out for code enforcement violations, when they're at night, like, for example, we, not even so much violations, but identifying, like, broken stop signs, and, you know, and broken street lights and whatnot, so we do that, you know, but yes, it, it's gonna be a continued process, uh, and we just kinda have to tactique our resources a little better, and.
Right.
Take it from there.
Thank you.
Can you look into that, Chief, see how many, um, I guess, how many enforcers to a certain amount of, um, homes, or, um?
Well, they're, they're defined by districts, I have, we have five code enforcement officers, and they're divided into five districts.
Okay.
And, uh.
The state requires, I, I don't know the state requirement, that's why I'm.
As, as far as, as I'm concerned, ma'am, I, I don't have that information, it may be, we could or not, I don't think so, but I'll certainly look it up and forward it to you.
I just wanna make sure that we have enough, uh.
Yes.
For our city.
For our city.
Uh-huh.
Yes, I think that, and, and yes, I would love to have more personnel, provided that we, we do have, you know, and need them, but I think in cross-training our police officers as well, and code enforcement, because we can, they can, we can enforce a, a, any, any city ordinance, violation or, or state law, or any law.
Yeah, because you already have the officers out and patrols, I mean, they.
And we're just gonna make sure that. That we utilize their staff correctly and properly before we go out and, you know, ask for, but I think educating the community is a huge factor, and that way, we, we don't keep repeating ourselves and doing this, and, and we need to break those bad habits. But I think that's where we come in, and we certainly try to do our best in that, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for what you're in there for doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
And I know we had already asked Council some questions, anybody have any more questions for Public Works? No, tax office? All right, now, moving on to ordinances, item number six, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance, changing the zoning district classification of Lot thirteen, Block forty-seven of Hillcrest Edition, two thirty-five Barasso Street, from R-three duplex district to R-three A apartment district, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date, this goes back to public hearing item number one. So, and Placido, I believe your recommendation was to approve it?
Yes, Mayor, the recommendation is to approve it, didn't wanna just add one thing I forgot to mention before, in addition to the one person who came to visit in opposition, we give two letters in favor for this item, then we're able from the property owner who has those two properties on the street. Uh, but yes, the recommendation is to approve this item for Council, any other questions?
Uh, Mayor, motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Second.
Second by Councilman Salinas, any further questions for Placido? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Item number seven, second reading of an ordinance, amending the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, adopted by ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fifteen, to adjust citywide revenues and appropriations to fund current year commitments, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date, Jesse?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, just to give you a little bit of an update, uh, the overall ordinance still remains the same, however, I do wanna give you updating to the figures, now that we do have a complete month that has closed since the pandemic, uh, started. So at this point, based on our projections, we, uh, we projected a loss of revenue of about seven hundred eighty thousand, the actual amount is seven hundred, uh, ten thousand nine hundred twenty-six. So it's slightly less than what our projection was, so it's a good sign, we hope that that continues in the future months, but as of now, the ordinance remains the same as last season.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Vialpando, second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. No further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Moving on to resolutions, item number eight, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the city council of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, requesting the transfer of that certain public roadway described herein on Exhibit A, from the Texas Department of Transportation to the city of Eagle Pass. Who's got that, Vanessa?
Like, went and see her on the screen, sorry.
To the council, so, um, I know we've had this conversation in the past with Tech Dot, and so this particularly relates to the area along Main Street from Ceylon into downtown, all the way to Commercial, and then from Commercial, from Maine, all the way to the bridge.
From Monroe? Uh, uh, say this screen again, I'm sorry, I lost you, I.
It's along Main Street?
No, it's Ceylon.
Yes, it's along Main, from Ceylon.
But I thought it was from, from Monroe, starting on Monroe or Ceylon? Monroe.
The, if you go to.
Is it either from the library?
One ninety-seven, it's on Paint one ninety-seven in your backup material?
My understanding of the note was that we wanted to make sure we included in Monroe.
We wanted Ceylon, because there are some businesses there that wanted to use the side log also, no?
So, I, my application, and based on the notes I have, it's from Ceylon, but not including the intersection, because we don't want it to.
Right, right, right. From the east side of the intersection.
But we can confirm that, that's a difference of a block, we'll confirm the exact limit, uh, but basically, all the area along Main Street. And so the reason for this, um, part of it is, we're focusing a lot on beautification and fostering economic development in the downtown area, and it becomes a little bit cumbersome for us, because if we wanna do improvements downtown, we have to get the authorization from Tech Dot, they have very strict guidelines as to what can and cannot be built, um, in their right-of-way, and we've had conversations with them in the past, and I believe this has been done in, in other communities. So they did send us a resolution that they've used with other communities, which is what we used as our template. One of the comments to make is, along this section of roadway that we're considering, um, getting dedicated from Tech Dot to the city of Eagle Pass, there is, um, where there was an existing signal along Monroe and Maine, which is the one that they removed, and then there's another one on Jefferson, that is currently there. The discussions have been had with Tech Dot, that they would recommend, uh, recommend removal of that second signal as well. The reason for that, if they dedicate this to us, we would be responsible for the maintenance of those signals, and we don't have, uh, the personnel or the capacity to do that, as, as municipality, so that would be the recommendation from them, and, and we concur with that. Um, given that it's the downtown area, we believe it could be handled with stop signs, um, so that would be one of the considerations that council would have to have. There is pros and cons, obviously, when we, uh, get this right-of-way, we would be in charge of maintaining it, so we have to make sure we account for that in our budget. Um, there's also aging utilities downtown, um, and unknown utilities, so those are the cons, but we do feel that there is enough pros that would make this beneficial, again, uh, we wouldn't be required to comply with all the requirements of Tech Dot, whenever we wanted to do our own improvement, we could do beautification for downtown, whether it's adding bulbouts at the intersections, or adding different types of signs to identify our downtown area. Um, so based on that, I'll go ahead and open it up for questions at this time.
You, you say there's gonna, what's the exact cost for the city, if the city adopts this part of Main Street, how much is it gonna cost?
So, we were looking at the length of roadway, there'll be approximately one thousand four hundred linear feet of roadway, that's what we're looking to acquire. Uh, right now, the condition is actually really good, because Tech Dot, again, has really high standards, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because I was discussing with the Public Works Director, what is it that we're gonna have to do to maintain it, and he wanted to make sure, especially right now, that they're doing the pipe bursting, there is different standards, when the waterworks project is going in, and they go into a Tech Dot roadway, they have to maintain the Tech Dot standard, and so the question was asked, what's gonna happen on these segments if the city does acquire? And so the hope is, and we actually reached out to Tech Dot, is that at least for these segments, they maintain that standard, that not because they're giving it to the city of Eagle Pass, we're gonna be expecting for that standard to go down. Uh, one, because they're in really good condition to begin with, and it's a lot cheaper to maintain, than let it deteriorate, because then your expense is gonna be higher, and, because it's one of the highly traveled areas in our, in our town. And so in terms of putting numbers, we don't have the numbers to that yet, but that was the conversation that was already started, and that's, uh, the feedback that I have so far, but I can most definitely provide that at, at the next meeting.
Because right now, the city doesn't pay for the maintenance, Tech Dot doesn't, so if we adopt it, then we're responsible, and I think it's very important to know the exact amount, because that's gonna be something that we have to pay.
In perpetuity.
Going, going forward.
Yes, I agree. Yes, I agree.
While they iron it out.
So we're having the discussion on that last block, which is Main Street between Monroe and Ceylon. And what they're saying is there is a portion of Monroe where we have a signal currently right now at Monroe and Rio Grande. And that is true. We have had conversations with Tech dot. If we were to take this, how do they keep connectivity? And I believe that comment is coming from, if they maintain that block, then it's easier for them to maintain connectivity to that one signal, which is over here on Rio Grande and Monroe. So I'll go ahead and confirm, that would be one block. So instead of the one thousand four hundred linear feet, we would be reducing to approximately twelve hundred and fifty feet. So I'll have that confirmation for you, but that's pretty much the scope of the project.
Do we want to table this item until we get clarification or we want to move forward?
I think that's the best thing to do.
This is a resolution.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, because this is a resolution. It's not three readings.
I would table it. I was under the impression it was a reading, so I thought that I could bring it back. So what I would do is recommend to table. And then at the next meeting, I'll provide you with the cost for the pavement maintenance. We'll confirm on that last segment of the.
And that way we have a better exhibit. That's what was my concern.
Exhibit the cost, and like you said, the pros and the cons.
Yeah, a cost benefit analysis.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table.
Motion to table by Councilman Salinas, second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. You'll get that for us at the next meeting. All right. No further questions. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item has been tabled. Item number nine, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, finding that AEP Texas Inc.'s application to amend its distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, authorizing participation with the cities served by AEP Texas, authorizing hire of a legal counsel, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Who's got this item? Nobody? Legal?
Mr. Morales.
Placido or legal?
Legal. Placido's our new attorney.
I'm here. Placido, is this your deal?
We didn't mean to interrupt your dinner.
Bring us some.
I'm starving.
Bring us some.
Item number nine, Eddie.
No, Ms. Morala didn't have this one. I think the plan was we're going to get legal assistance on that one.
It's the AEP one.
AEP?
Item number nine.
Item nine.
This is something that comes to us every so often, no?
It's the ongoing one, Eddie.
Mary, um, Mary. You had that. You were probably, I haven't received any documentation from AEP, but this probably just sent directly to the city manager or the city secretary's staff. The point usually with these AEP representations from the law firm is that we, the city doesn't have to pay any of the expenses. They're actually shifted over to AEP. So is this one of those where the AEP resolution was sent to you all for processing?
Correct.
Yeah. But we recommend approval since there's no fees or costs associated or that are charged to the city.
Is that whether we win or lose?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Vialpando.
Oh, mayor, just make a clarification. It is to approve.
For the denial.
That's what I was wondering because I was reading, that's why I was rereading it because it didn't make sense.
And to hire the legal counsel to represent the city.
Okay, explain it again, Jesse.
AEP wants to raise their rates, right? Well, we're fighting them to say, no, you're not raising your rates. So that's what this is about. And this has been going on, I don't know, I've seen this over and over, over the years.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So it's just to deny their rate increase and, and join the, the other cities, is that?
It's a continuation, yeah.
So they, the law firm that does this sort of work, this very specialized work, is out of Austin. They already have us on their master list. Anytime that AEP goes and requests that the state to go change or increase their rates, it automatically triggers them to send these resolutions, draft resolutions to the city secretary's office usually, of all of the other, the cities that they've represented in the past. And, and so they're, they're basically telling you, hey, if you want to fight AEP on their increased rates, please adopt this resolution. And historically, and it's in there also, it does not cost the, it doesn't cost the city because they shift that cost over to the AEP, to the utility provider.
Now, one thing I'm curious about, because we've seen, I've seen this over and over again, but I don't ever recall getting the outcome of any of these. I mean, does AEP win? Does AEP not win? Do they settle on a certain increase or, or they don't get an increase at all? That's the question.
Do they, I've seen a number of resolutions where they'll, the, they'll either come to an agreement, and we've had all of the above, they either lost, they've come to an agreement or they're successful in not getting the rate increase. But it's, there is some sort of dispositive resolution that is forwarded to the city secretary's office. At least that's what I've seen through the years.
All right, so there is a motion still, Councilman Vialpando? Motion still stands?
AEP is not the service provider, right? AEP is the.
The lines.
Electric providers.
The, they do, they do the work.
They do the maintenance. They don't do the, they don't provide the service.
Right, they're the pass-through because it's what they did.
They just connect, disconnect, and hold lines.
Uh huh.
So when you see your light bill, you're going to get what you're paying per kilowatt and then the service fee.
The pass.
Which is AEP.
And it's always about half and half.
Both. Oh, you already seconded the motion, okay.
So we have a motion and a second by Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number ten, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the city council of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, approving the submission of an application to the office of the Governor Homeland Security Grant Division for the Operation Stone Garden Program and designating the authorization official.
Mayor, council, this is a grant that the city's received for the last six years. The amount is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars every year, and it's, majority of this money goes to pay for overtime. This money is paid through the Department of Homeland Security and is specifically to assist Border Patrol with border security measures. Sometimes they do approve agreement with that funding, hit, really hit or miss depending on, on their funding that year, but the vast majority, it's about at least eight and nine percent of the resolution. So the recommendation is to approve the resolution, and in the resolution it authorizes the police chief as the.
So move. Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Other business, item number eleven, discussion and possible action on the current process for dilapidated substandard or unoccupied buildings. And who's going to do the presentation here?
I don't mind doing it, mayor. We've already gone through the background there in the back conference room. Let me know how much detail you want me to provide to the council and the public.
I did request for a list. Did everybody get that list? Was that sent on the agenda? With a list of some properties that were, that were already identified? Was it on there?
No.
Nope, okay. So anyways, we got a dilapidated building. What's the process? I know we were talking with planning department on what they got to do before they get you the packet so you can take the next step, so. So the first step?
Yeah, you want me to go through it?
Please.
Pulling up the list. So just generally, mayor, council, whenever, we don't do this on a monthly basis because there's not that many. So whenever we see structures that are substandard and more than likely are at that level where they should be torn down, there's a list that the planning department usually maintains. And when they get to a certain number, then they usually transfer that over to legal so that we can finalize the steps that are necessary to ensure that we have the right judgment so that we can go in there and either our own public works department goes and tears down the structure, or that is outsourced to a private company after some bidding procedures are put in place. And then they go and do that work. Through the years, the mayor asks, hey, where are we? What have we done? And that's what that dilapidated building list is. Those, those are only the ones that through the years, the city attorney's office has gotten involved because it has reached that point where the first notice letter that the owner received didn't result in the owner doing something and doing it on their own, demolishing the structure on their own, to where additional work needed to be done and it's been forwarded to, to legal so that we can get an actual judgment. And two thousand and four alone, that's when we started hitting it. For example, we came, we began with city attorneys in two thousand and three approximately, and we hit, I think it was thirty-five structures around that time from that list. And then there's, there's some other ones there, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So we're at that point. I understand that some citizens may have already raised concerns or complaints about new structures that the mayor and the council and administration should look at. What we have in place, and we had a conference, we had a meeting in the back conference room before the city council meeting, and understanding that we have a new planning director, we kind of gave a little background as to, you know, the necessary steps. We'll compile a checklist and forward it to Mr. Madera so that he can work with his staff in getting the process going. They can do a lot of the legwork, which first requires that an inspector go out there, assess the structure, and make sure that there's sufficient evidence to support a finding that it should be demolished. And then a notice letter goes out to the owner, and it should go out to all the owners if there's more than one. And then hopefully they'll comply at that point because there'll be a number for them to contact the planning department wherever Mr. Madera puts in charge. And then they're able to resolve it at that end, and it doesn't have to go to the next step, which is if they fail to respond, if they fail to address the concerns from the city planning department, and if they don't board it up or they don't demolish it, then that file will get sent to the city attorney's office so that we can file a lawsuit. We can have them appear in front of municipal court and answer to the judge. We present our evidence and then the judge will make a determination whether he finds that there was sufficient evidence to support a finding that it must be, that the structure must be torn down. All fees associated with this, whether it be legal fees, court costs, or the demolition fees, are then shifted over to the owner. It's the owner's responsibility to cover those, those costs. Sometimes there are no owners, or we cannot locate them. We have to publish and follow the, the requirements on service on a, on a defendant. And then we can take the default judgment. We go through the steps of demolishing the structure, the city does, whether it's in-house through Public Works or through a third party. And then we file a lien on the property so that at whatever point in time later on, the property is sold, the city is made whole again, and they recover their, their costs associated with the expenses. That's all I have here.
Will you provide us that checklist also, please?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for? It doesn't seem like a very complicated process. Placido?
Mayor, I'd like to add, just to add one quick thing to what Mr. Morales said. Yeah, we'll be working, working with them a little bit more closely, making sure the process moves along a little bit more quickly as well. I think my, what I would explain is that we're letting, letting several, I guess you could say build up before we process the batch of structures like this and go through this process. But what I wanted to emphasize is kind of tying back to what Mr. Antunes said, and several people have made comments today tying back to code enforcement, things like that, is community involvement. Anybody can notify, anybody can report it to us, the planning department or the code enforcement, can be, the information can be passed over any, anyway. So any members of council, city employees, or just members of the public, citizens should notify us if they notice something that appears unsafe. At that point, we'll send out an inspector to make that assessment and determine what, what the situation is of that building. Does it, does it need a full-on demolition? Is it just, is it so unsafe that it can't be remedied? Or are there maybe steps that the owner can take to remedy it without going as far as demolition? But I just wanted to make that point, is anybody can, and we do ask the community for their help in spotting these and notifying us of them so we can, we can go take a look.
Thank you, Placido. All right, so Eddie, you did mention all the costs, all the fees associated with this will be reimbursed. So whether planning starts it off or legal does it all, I mean, it's attached to the bill on the, on the property owner. So Placido, can we handle this? Start looking at this and, and take it, take, look at those, that list that, that was shared? And please share it with the rest of the council if you haven't.
Maybe at the next meeting?
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
I would say that the threshold would be if you have five already, if you have five complaints, the planning department, that should be more than enough for you to at least get those five going, send that notice letter, wait for thirty days. If they don't, if the owners don't, don't act, then, you know, you, you transition that file with all of the evidence over to the city attorney's office so that we can then initiate the lawsuit. But a minimum would be five that where we can get them all going in the same day. Because we have to have a different docket for, for, we try not to get them in during municipal court, the either the eight, the nine o'clock in the morning or the one o'clock, because it does take a little bit more. We usually will set those like at three o'clock in the afternoon because it takes the inspector to have to testify under oath in front of the judge.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and council, not every structure, you may look at a structure when either, like Ms. Yolanda was talking, or mayor, I know does a lot of bike exercising, you may see something and it looks terrible from the outside, but structurally it's sound. And so some of those may just need to be boarded up, and we need to send a letter seeing if the owner wishes to hopefully like, you know, give it another, another paint job or, or do something to kind of clean it up a little bit, spruce it up. But some of these structures, and I was even, you know, through the years amazed at how they looked horrible from the outside, but the inspector was like, I don't have sufficient information or evidence for you to support a finding that, that the structure shouldn't be demolished. The walls are still sound, the roof is still good, it just looks ugly.
It's just unsightly.
Okay.
So are you all happy with that process or is there some action you all want to take on how to move forward with this? Or just?
Well, let's look at the.
Move forward as it was discussed.
Let's look at the list. I mean, the sooner the better. We can, we can get on it.
So is there?
The sooner the better because a lot of these properties, you know, owners just kind of look at them as a tax write-off, you know, we have them there or whatever.
Well, some are, are the heirs and nobody lives here, you know?
But for, for the city and for other business owners, you know, it didn't hurt them.
Is there a motion to move forward on this process? Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman Vialpando. You all know what you got to do, guys, so we'll take it to, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to executive session, item number twelve, executive session pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero seven two. Executive session pursuant to section five-five-one point zero seven-one and five-five-one point zero seven-two. Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code. Consultation with attorney and deliberation about real property regarding the donation agreement with Wico and Associates, LTD and possible action in open session regarding same. Executive session, item thirteen. Executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one point zero seven-one and five-five-one point zero seven-two of chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code. Consultation with attorney and deliberation regarding real property involving condemnation proceedings by the city of the following property. Two-five-seven Main Street, Eagle Pass, Texas, seven-eight-eight-five-two. And possible action in open session regarding same. Let the record reflect, the council went into executive session at seven-twenty P.M. on May fifth, twenty-twenty. Everybody has to shut off? Are we going over there? To reflect that the city council came out of executive, executive session at eight-thirty-two P.M. on May fifth, twenty-twenty. Uh, moving on to item number twelve, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one point zero seven-one and five-five-one point zero seven-two, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code. Consultation with attorney and deliberation about real property regarding the donation, the donation agreement with Wico and Associates, LTD, and possible action in open session regarding same. So as I was telling y'all, you know, we see some of the concerns of the Wico and Associates, and, uh, we have been able to arrange a meeting, and just wanted to make sure that you all were okay in agreement with me discussing with the Wico and Associates.
I make the motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Executive session thirteen, executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one point zero seven-one and five-five-one point zero seven-two of chapter five-five-one. Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and deliberation regarding real property involving condemnation proceedings by the city for the following property. Two-five-seven Main Street, Eagle Pass, Texas, seven-eight-eight-five-two. And possible action in open session regarding same. Here, uh, you're just taking it to the commissioners that were appointed, Mr. Morales? The motion is, the, the motion will be for you to continue with that commissioners' hearing?
Yeah, it was mostly a status report to you all. Uh, we appreciate you, you know, listening to where we are in this case. We're set for court June first, and, uh, we plan on requesting that the court, again, appoint the commissioners and assign an actual hearing for us to present a valuation of the case and proceed forward with having the commissioners set a value on, on the property.
And then return with whatever decision is made?
Correct.
There's a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion and move forward.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Yelpando. Any further discussion? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Other question adjourned. Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Yelpando. All those in favor, just raise your right hand. Unanimous. Meeting adjourned at eight-thirty-five P.M. on May fifth, twenty-twenty. I'm getting better.